This is a meeting of the Township Committee, April 18th, 2022. The notice requirements provided for in the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied. Notice of this meeting was properly given by transmission to the Asbury Park Press, the Independent, and the Two of Your Times, and by posting at the Middletown Township Municipal Building, and filing with the Township Clerk, all on January 7th, 2022. Committeeman Clark.
Here.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Here.
Committeeman Sedimbrino. Deputy Mayor Heibel.
Here.
Mayor Perry.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to honor the troops serving worldwide defending our constitutions, freedoms, and way of life. Thank you. Our first item on tonight's agenda, we have a presentation recognizing April as National Donate Life Month in the township of Middletown. At this time, I'd like to invite Vice Chair of New Jersey Sharing Network Foundation Board Jane Buckowitz and Nancy Buttle and Middletown Resident and Organ Transplant Recipient Ron Walsh to join Mayor Perry at the front of the room.
Today is a really special occasion, and oftentimes I talk for too long and I tell the whole story and then I don't allow other people, but this is such an important story to be told, and that is the fact that April is Donate Life Month. And, you know, the one big thing that everybody can do, the easiest thing that everybody can do, and, you know, I know not everybody has it, but actually I just had to re-up my own driver's license, and previously on there, it did not have the little organ donor sticker at the bottom, the little heart that they put at the bottom. But April is Donate Life Month, and it is so important, obviously, with the lists that we see of organs that are needed, the lists all across our country of those looking for help, those looking for support. And I'm very honored to declare April as Donate Life Month, and we have a group up here of unbelievable individuals that have been on both sides of that, that have experienced the pain of losing a loved one, of being able to provide help, and then someone fortunate enough to receive that support. So I will, I don't know who wants to go first. Okay, all right. You're lined up perfectly. I love it. So before I read this proclamation, if you wouldn't mind, just explaining, because obviously this is being broadcast to all Middletown, and people are able to come and watch it later, so it's important that we know and tell that story.
Thank you. Thank you for having us all here today. As Mayor explained, we do represent three different facets of organ donation, and I'm sure it's not something that most of us wake up in the morning thinking about, but it really does impact everyone, and it could potentially impact any of you. So today, I'm here not only to thank you for this honor and the proclamation that the Township is about to bestow on us, but I'm mainly here as a donor mom. So I'm going to tell you the story that brought our family into the world of organ donation. It goes back to 2009, when my son Dan, who at the time was 21 years old and a senior at Ramapo College, he was all set to graduate on Friday, and here it was that year, it was Mother's Day. And he surprised me by coming into our kitchen, I lived in Howell, and I was there with my family, and he came in with two sets of ShopRite flowers, "Happy Mother's Day, Mom." We thought he was going to be studying for his finals, but he just took the ride home just for a few hours. And a strange thing happened. We were sitting around the breakfast table, and he stood up and he pulled his driver's license out of his pocket. And he said, "You're not going to believe this, but I just, I went to the DMV this week, I got my updated license because he had turned 21." And he said, "Mom, someday somebody's going to get these green eyes." So I scolded him for talking about such a morbid thing, but then we moved on with our day and eventually on with our week. Well, as the week unfolded, what happens at Ramapo is they'll ask their students to pack up their apartments, their dorms, bring everything home, but then come back for the balance of the week for senior celebration. He was doing that, he was in the process of bringing all his things home, when we don't quite know what happened, but he was involved in a serious single-car accident where his car hit a tree. So I was away on a business trip, the rest of my family was at our home in Howell, we all raced to the hospital, but we were told with no uncertain terms that Danny had suffered a very traumatic brain injury, and he was not going to survive without life support. Now, I don't know if you were like I was back then, I thought that to become an organ donor was pretty happenstance in most hospitals every day. Well, it isn't. An organ donor usually happens maybe two dozen times a year in a trauma center like Jersey Shore. So when it happened, the hospital community itself was very moved by it. So that's what happened in that particular moment, was a doctor in the hospital, a doctor named Patrick Buttle, he came to console our family and to just tell us that our son's, you know, cavalier decision to be an organ donor was going to be something that would help our family to feel over the years to come. So what happened was, my son went on to save three lives, we were very proud of that fact, and now I had the business of worrying about his sister, his only sister, who was only 17 at the time and essentially had lost the favorite person in her life. And she went on, thanks to this organization, the New Jersey Sharing Network, which supports donor families like myself, we got very involved, and she started going out on speaking engagements with Dr. Patrick Buttle. So I want to now introduce you to my friend Nancy Buttle, the name, you'll catch it, and she's gonna, we don't want to end this on a sad note, so you're going to hear about how our family's lives have become commingled, and it really has a happy end.
Thank you again for having us. Well, as Jane said, we're very involved in the Sharing Network, and I thank you for having us, but our story goes back even before that night that Jane Buckowitz became a hero. It was back in 2002, my husband just happened to come home from the hospital one day and say to me, "Hey Nancy," a friend of his named Andy, "Andy has kidney disease, and unless he gets a transplant, he's going to have to go on dialysis." I said, "Oh, that's terrible. I'm a nurse, okay? I know what life's like on dialysis." He said, and this man Andy was a practicing orthopedic surgeon, it would end his career if he had to go on dialysis, and he had helped thousands of people in his life. He then says to me in a very calm voice, "I told him if I'm a match, I'll give him one of mine." I'm looking at him like, "Are you kidding me? We have two school-aged children, you have a busy practice." He said, "Nancy, it's the right thing to do." Need I tell you, six weeks later, we were in the same part of this hospital, and he was giving his left kidney to his friend and colleague. The man went on to live another 11 years, went back to practice, and changed the entire quality of his life. But not only changed the quality of his life, changed the quality of my family's lives 2002. Fast forward to 2009, where my husband, not in the capacity of a physician, is at Jersey Shore when they call him and say, "We have a young man here named Dan Buckowitz, can he come?" And he went there as a support, he used to go as a support person to support the family during that decision of donation. And he met Jane, he met Dan's father, and he met Amy, Dan's sister. And he and Amy became fast friends, and they would go oftentimes, Jane's daughter and my husband, to talk to groups like you, to schools and stuff, about the importance of organ donation. Again, fast forward to 2013 now, and we have our annual 5K run, and Amy runs a team, you know, it's a fundraiser for the Sharing Network. It's a lot of fun. It's in Long Branch on May 15. And she decides after the run, she and her girlfriends are going to go out and continue to celebrate Danny's life, and they decide to go to the Parker House and see her. You're all familiar with Parker House, right? Many of you spent hours there? Okay. She walks in, yeah. She walks into the Parker House, she sees this adorable bartender who just happens to be wearing a green bracelet like that. She goes, "What's the chances of that?" So she goes up to the bar, and she says to him, "Excuse me, where'd you get that green bracelet?" And, of course, she's adorable, so he's, 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 he's holding on her, he goes, "Oh, my father's involved in an organization called the New Jersey Sharing Network." Now, she had never met my son because he was away at college and medical school then, you know, all those years that my husband was doing things with Amy. And she says to him, "Who's your father?" And he says, "Dr. Buttle." She goes, "I know your father. I know him very well." Again, let's fast forward to 2019, Amy and Vincent, my son, get married, okay? And then, in January of 2021, they have a baby girl named Eleanor. So Jane and I share a grandchild, but out of tragedy and out of heartache, and that day that Danny became a hero, not only to the people who received his organs and his gifts, something very special happened. These two young people were brought together, and now we have this beautiful life called Eleanor. So Danny is shining down on us. So again, I thank you for your time, and my good friend, Mr. Walsh, is going to talk to you.
All right, well, I'm a liver recipient, a dapper liver, in August 24th of this last year, 2021. I should actually still be walking around according to the general public, in aches and pains and all of that, but I have to admit, my recovery has been nothing but stellar. I'm actually an exception to the normal, and I'm very grateful for that. So my journey started really about 25 years ago, whether or not. I was in the Marine Corps at the time, I was stationed at Camp Lejeune in the 70s, in the 70s, and it turns out that from '53 to '87, there was contaminated water at Camp Lejeune, and one of the many contaminants was something called vinyl chloride that has been proven by the United States government to cause cirrhosis and liver cancer. It's hepatic cellular carcinoma specific. So I didn't know that then, I drank the water, I bathed in the water, I did everything I had to do, had a son there, so anyway, fast forward, you know, life went on, I got a job, I worked, I brought up a family, we did all that good stuff. And then about 10 years ago, my doctor had me do an MRI for a hernia or something like that, and he comes to me and he says, "You know, you have a fatty liver." I was like, "What?" "That?" And, you know, he said, "Well, a lot of people in America have fatty livers." He says, "There's something we got to watch, change your diet, reduce your salt, you'll be okay." Okay. So that went on for, I don't know, probably five or 10 years. And my gastroenterologist, you know, because he realized all the time that my immunized and whatever, he gave me more and more and more, he does a biopsy of my liver, and he says, "You have cirrhosis." Well, that blew any chance of likelihood, by the way. I couldn't get any. So I said, "Okay, you know, that's, I mean, what am I going to do?" He said, "Well, you know, doctoring can do this, do that, do that." Okay. So we did all of those. Unfortunately, in 2019, I was telling a fine lady, I was coming home from a job that I had with the United States Census at the time, I get a phone call from my gastroenterologist here, and he says, "Do you have a minute to talk?" So I go into the rest area and get in the phone and chat with him, and he says, "I hate to tell you, you have a tumor on your liver." I'm like, "What are you talking about? This was all original equipment, and there was nothing wrong with me." And he said, "No." He said, "You have a tumor on your liver." Now, prior to this, they'd sent me to Philadelphia to meet up with a doctor who was a specialist and all of that, and according to my gastroenterologist here, it was to familiarize myself, become friendly with him, so I would know who it was that I might need something. Turns out, he was an excellent doctor, Dr. Harrington with Thomas Jefferson Hospital. And anyway, as time went by, my cirrhosis got worse, my symptoms started to become much worse in 2019. I was already having what they call varices, it's basically varico stains, but in your stomach, and they were popping and bleeding, you know, it was anemic, and I had low iron and I had to get iron injections, blood transfusion, and multiple times, matter of fact, for a while, there were my hepatologists, I was getting iron and/or blood every three weeks, every three weeks, or months, and I would get tired and lethargic, I'd sleep all the time, I mean, I used to sleep till 10:30 in the morning, get up, and by noon, I was already napping. I mean, it was terrible, a terrible life. Then as the disease continued, I got something called hepatic insulopathy. That's where you're so confused that if you take a round peg and a round hole, you can't put the two together, it just doesn't happen, you move like this, and you can't walk straight. At one point, my wife, thank God, she was always there for me, had to take me to the blood serum. I couldn't walk down my stairs. I mean, bitterly, I could not walk, I had no strength, no mind, nothing. I had to sit on my butt and bounce down stairs, because of the car. And it's been five or six days in the hospital, after that, got treated, they cleared it up, I was sent home. That happened at least four, maybe five times, in different scenarios, but same thing happened. I couldn't drive anywhere, I couldn't go anywhere, I just couldn't do anything, always sleeping, always, I was at the doctor so much that they were just calling me Ron, no longer was it Mr. Walsh or anyone, but Ron, your turn, everything. Well, then I was listed finally, when they first told me I was going to get put on the transplant list, they said, "No way, I'm not doing that." That scared the hell out of me. I wouldn't do it. I know that it was unnecessary, but I wouldn't do it. And it took about three weeks, I had to visit my local doctors here, who I trusted implicitly, and they were all like, "You've got to do it, you're going to be done, it's going to be over. Maybe you have 18 months to live." And that was in 2020. Maybe we might have 18, I don't know, 18 months, I want, you know, 35 more years. So anyway, I finally acquiesced and went back to the doctor and said, "Okay, let's get on the list." And, you know, getting on the list is not like, "Okay, you're on the list, you got to go through a series of testing." It's over, in my case, it was over a two-day period in Philadelphia, and I had to see about a dozen different doctors and go to a dozen different kinds of tests, and the tests, in some cases, were simple. There was one test called the blood gas test, they did, talking about blood gases, it was the most horrible test, because, you know, when you get blood, well, when you have this test, they go to your, not your artery, but your vein, and they take the blood out, it is the most painful, in my opinion, the most painful, probably like a woman having a baby without any, you know, drugs. It was the most horrible thing. And in fact, when the guy finished doing that, he says, "Oh, I'm going to run to the place and, you know, get this analyzed." So anyway, I go through all of that, I finally get a call, I am the backup on the list, I'm excited with the false alarm, then we got another call, another call. I had six false alarms in total, seven times, one week after I had my sixth false alarm, seven times was a charm, they went in, they took everything out, they take out your liver and your gallbladder, by the way. And in my case, when they took out the liver, cancer that was in the liver was jettisoned with it, well, I was technically cured right away, I mean, not to say I was, but there was a chance of coming back. And I tell you, recovery is tough, and if you ever want to be called a superhero, donate. You can save eight lives, improve 75 others, so you can affect as many people as possible, all because of you. Come on, what good is organs going to do when it's over anyway, right? So you may as well let somebody else live, let some other people get better. So donate, donatelife.net, better than you drive a truck, it's forever.
So Nancy, Jane, Ron, you know, first of all, the connection you two have is unbelievable, and it's one of a kind. All three of you, you know, I sat up here for a lot of things to do, and all of your stories touch on exactly why we're proclaiming it as Donate Life Month, because it is-
So unbelievable, free people is the best. Having that simple registration for putting it on your, so our honor that I, Mayor Tony Perry, and the Middletown Township Committee do hereby proclaim April 2022 as National Donate Life Month in the township of Middletown, and urge all residents to join me in promoting organ and tissue donor education. Donate Life Month. Thank you for telling us your story, thank you for telling Middletown your story, and thank you for all the advocacy that you do. It really means a lot, and we know, seeing the families that have been impacted here, what you two are doing and what you're demonstrating, Ron, is truly wonderful. So I want to thank all of you very much, very much appreciated.
Thank you. Pleasure to meet you.
Pleasure to meet you.
We have proclamation recognizing May 1st through May 7th, 2022, as Municipal Clerks' Week in the Township of Middletown. We have a proclamation recognizing May 2022 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the Township of Middletown. We have a proclamation recognizing May 2022 as Older Americans' Month in the Township of Middletown. And a proclamation recognizing May 2022 as Buddy Poppy Month in the Township of Middletown. And finally, a proclamation recognizing May 1st through May 7th as National Small Business Week in the Township of Middletown. Our next item on tonight's agenda, we have approval of minutes, the regular meeting of March 21st, 2022, and workshop meeting of April 4th, 2022. We have a motion. Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Heibel. Mayor Perry. Motion carries to approve minutes. This time, we have public hearing on proposed ordinances, 2022-3338, a bond ordinance providing an appropriation of $1,400,000 for construction of a skateboard park in Kunkel Park, buy-in for the Township of Middletown and the County of Monmouth, New Jersey, and authorizing the issuance of $1,330,000 in bonds or notes of the Township for financing part of the appropriation.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2022-3338. Okay, Don had his hand up first. We're going to go, Don, and then you serve right here, and then Al, bring it up, all right.
Good evening, my name's Don Watson, living at One Collinson Drive over in New Monmouth. I was surprised to see this ordinance about this skate park. I'm glad you guys are doing it. I was in favor of the last skate park that was over on Polch, and I was just wondering, I got a few questions here. Incidences that happened at Polch, the Polch Park, I'm wondering what's going to prevent them from happening at this new park at Kunkel.
Yeah, so the first thing I would say about that is, obviously, the Kunkel Park is in a much better, more visible place.
More visible than Polch?
Well, it's more visible in terms of, it's already part of a big park, right? And it's utilizing a space that already had the surface, that needs very little work, and in fact, some of the folks in the audience took, built a little course themselves, a little skate park themselves, but, and then on top of that, obviously, the camera, the camera system that'll be installed, the increased, better fencing, much better abilities for us to ensure that those incidents do not happen, and also the fact that we, there's no bikes. The BMX was a big problem at Polch, that was a huge problem that we had at Polch, and with not allowing the BMX biking and actually creating it where the facilities themselves don't really lend themselves to BMX biking, further prevents any incidents that we had witnessed prior from happening in this new skate park.
So you're using different equipment that doesn't cater to bicycles?
Correct, correct. It's mostly targeted for skateboards and/or scooters.
Okay, roller blades?
Roller blades, yeah. I'm a kid of the 90s, I always forget about the roller blades.
We had four-wheel skates. Metal ones. Oh, yep. Now, the equipment that you had at Polch Park, what happened to that equipment? You know, I know it was all packed away or something.
Did we sell that town? We still, I think-
Hard to put back together. And I guess the cameras are going to eliminate the need for a patrolman to be on duty there?
You won't need a patrolman on duty, but they'll all have access to the camera systems that we're working on installing in parks all across town.
Okay, and they're monitored here?
They're monitored multiple locations.
Okay.
But not just here at Town Hall.
Well, I'm glad you guys are finally doing something with the park, the roller hockey rink.
Yeah, I mean, it's, this roller rink, there was a lot of conversations about what we should do with it, right? It was being taken down, and you're, the space was just sitting there, and prior to it being utilized for this exact purpose, albeit not, not the proper way, but it was being utilized, I think that this is, the fact that it's on the Henry Hudson Trail, the fact that it's a part of Kunkel Park, the fact that we want to make the improvements that we do to Kunkel Park, I think is a critical component, and providing it that, that this will be a place for skateboarding and scooters and, you know, roller, roller blades, you know, these are all the things that, you know, we think has an opportunity to succeed, and we have every intention for it succeeding.
And what's going to happen to the roller rink at McMahon Park?
For McMahon?
On the roller rink? Oh, yeah, okay. I was just curious about that. I know there are a few people have been-
We have, and the other part of McMahon is, Jen, Jen's not here, is she? No.
A lot of people over there play pickleball?
Ballplayers will go with our pickleball courts.
Yeah.
So, but we're also beginning, as the mayor just mentioned, we're doing a new playground over there, and redoing-
Have you seen the Field of Dreams playground down in Tom's River? It's the-
I've seen the movie.
Not that one. Not that one, not that one. Kevin Costner's not coming out in this one. No, there's a playground down in Tom's River, and it's called Field of Dreams. And this, the replacement for the McMahon Playground kind of came out of two, two things. It was, there was a woman who on Facebook was taught, who lives near McMahon Park, was discussing the fact that her 100% disabled child really didn't have a place that he could go. So we brought the whole family into Town Hall, and we are working on constructing a playground where, you know, we're really proud of the Croydon Playground. I mean, that's really an unbelievable. It's where I take Reagan and Grant. And this playground over at McMahon will make an entire, not just Middletown proud, not just the folks that live around McMahon, but I think an entire Bay Shore proud. Because it capitalizes on the fact that we're able to design a playground where my kids and everyone else's kids, regardless of their capabilities, are able to come together and not even realize that they're interacting with someone who is in a wheelchair or interacting with someone who maybe have ADHD or whatever, you know, special needs that makes their child just wanting to be, feel like they have a place that they can go. And that's what this playground is gonna do. So it's completely wheelchair accessible. You'll be able to take wheelchairs up the ramps and everything. It's unbelievable. So McMahon's really gonna get, have.
You're gonna have swings too, right?
I'm gonna have swings, and I'm going to allow Don Watson from 1 Collinson Drive to pick the tree so that there is enough shade over there to ensure that you're happy, Don.
Probably need more than one tree.
All right. We'll talk about how many there can be, but.
If there's gonna be that many people there, you're gonna need more than one tree.
I hear you, I hear you.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, you got it, Don. Yes, sir. Just state your name and address for the record, sir.
My name's Thomas Laurel, live on 19 Raridan, actually around the corner from Kunkel Park.
Yep.
Unbeknownst to me, I really didn't even know who Bill Kunkel was at the time.
Yeah.
And I'm just curious, show of hands, everybody know who Bill Kunkel? Anybody know who Bill Kunkel is?
No, MLB umpire. And player.
Right.
Is that right?
So that, so my understanding, my understanding was the park was dedicated in his honor. And to be perfectly honest with you, up until the time I tripped in the parking lot with my dog because there was insufficient lighting, sent a letter to Department of Recreation, and that caused them.
In the parking lot over by the skate rink or by the baseball field?
Kunkel Park. It was completely, I think they had rehabbed the road, and then they had a lot of construction.
Okay.
Equipment, so it was all disheveled, potholes. I had tripped, sent the letter. I mean, I wasn't looking to, I got a little bruised, but I'm not looking to sue anybody. But it caused the Township to fix the parking lot. Then they fixed the basketball rooms. So I've been trying to get the tennis courts and the basketball resurfaced to deaf ears. So I was wondering if it was possible to amend the ordinance and solicit some funds to fix the tennis courts.
So normally, we don't handle tennis courts like that. We try and, actually, it's oftentimes that we try and incorporate them into our roads program because you're utilizing the same materials.
Have you, have you been to that park lately?
Actually, when there was a Leonardo group, it didn't, I'm not sure the neighborhood group lasted all that long, maybe one or two years. You know, Vinnie was there. But we took a whole, we walked the entire park. But yes, I've been to Kunkel Park multiple times.
Because I'm in fear if I'm gonna go play tennis, it's in such disrepair, I may trip again. So I don't want that to happen, but, you know, it's just, it's in very, very bad disrepair. I wish someone from the township would come down, take a look at it.
I'm happy to come down, take a look. Ted and I were actually, from the last meeting, we were just at somebody else's house that had requested a meeting at their home. I'm happy to go out with Ted and Janet and take a look at it. Not a problem whatsoever.
I don't take, I really appreciate that.
Not, it's not a worry at all.
I just figured it would enhance the park as well as, you know, it's kind of like in combination with the skate park.
Yeah, Rick, who's two minutes away, myself, Ted, Janet, we'll all go out there. And Laura, who's my assistant, happy to get you her contact.
Would I be able to?
Absolutely, 100%. We'll coordinate it, we'll coordinate it with you.
Should I give you my email or something?
Laura's gonna take it.
We have, thank you folks for your time.
Are you doing? Thank you, sir. Thanks. Vin?
Technically on that, so we can't amend this ordinance to include that.
Right.
We'd have to do a separate ordinance for it.
Yeah.
39 Brevent, Leonardo, right across the street from Kunkel Park. Got a few questions. The gentleman in back answered some of them. As far as the fences, this thing gonna be locked up after dark?
Yes.
It's gonna be locked. Who is going to lock it?
Well, the goal for all of our parks in terms of what we're doing with our camera systems is, and similar to that of what we're doing in Ideal Beach, is we have, we have an app that allows us to turn lights on, turn lights off, lock certain buildings that we need to lock all via a cell phone.
Well, I know about the app because the lights been coming on and off. Because that's what I kind of figured. I see these lights, they've been off for three, four years.
It's amazing what these things can do.
Yeah, I know what they can do. That's why I carry that one. Flip, anyway.
What is that? I'm kidding.
I gotta put a quarter in it to make it. Keeps me out of trouble. Anyway, so basically, you're gonna set this app up?
We already have it. We already utilize it.
Already in the program. I understand that. That's why I kind of figured this thing was coming on and off, on and off, all of a sudden. So and then when we heard all of a sudden that the park was gonna be put in, and put two and two together with the lights. Now, lights are gonna go out at what time? Say, right now in summertime, you won't need them.
Right now in summertime, you won't.
Your daylight, your daylight till eight o'clock, maybe nine o'clock, okay?
It's, it all has to do with the policy of what we decide for the park.
Fencing, how high?
Do you know what that chain link on the perimeter is? It's, let me just clarify, it's iron fencing in the front. So basically, the new entrance would be the support beams for the old scoreboard. So now the entrance will not be all the way to the left of the, of the park. It'll be more towards the center. So those two beams right there are gonna be encapsulated, right? Because the scoreboard is staying. So the fence will meet there, so it'll have a decorative fence in the front, and then it'll be chain link all around the perimeter.
Right. How high?
I believe it's a six-foot fence, and we're required to fence it by our insurance fund that we belong to.
Okay, why can't you go eight foot? Yeah, I mean, like you said, the insurance, I understand where you're coming from, okay? But if you take one at Atlantic Islands, okay, Atlantic Islands is totally different than anybody else.
Yeah.
Okay, Atlantic Islands.
They're not at grade, though.
Pardon?
They're not at grade in Atlantic Islands. Those are all elevated platforms.
Right, they're elevated platforms, but that gate gets locked. It gets locked by security at the harbor. Yes, the police do patrol if security calls them, there's a problem. Security opens and closes. But you take Bricktown and you take Long Branch, okay? Police Department actually there. I actually seen the one in Bricktown where my son lives. We went over there and looked, and it was getting, just getting dark. Patrol car pulled up, okay, fellas, let's go, threw the lock on it.
Let's, we can absolutely talk to the chief about something like that.
Plus, I'm right there, and I'm gonna hear. There's gonna be a lot of loud music there. Eventually, it's gonna be loud music. All right. So, I mean, what do we do? Just call, tell them, hey, there's loud music at the, at the rink here?
Yeah, I mean, I can't, you know I can't talk in a hypothetical.
They're 24/7. I understand that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I understand that 110%. Yeah, we're gonna get loud music.
I understand what you're saying, Ben. I do.
You say the cameras.
Yes, sir.
But it would be nice. It really would be nice. Maybe, maybe during, maybe towards the evening hours, okay? Say around after five, at least two or three times, patrol car just drive through. Just drive through.
I don't, I don't ever, I try not to comment on what the procedures or the defined routes of the police are going to be for safety purposes. But I'm more than happy to pass along your comments and feedback to the chief.
They don't have to stop, you know, just drive through, make themself present. That's it, you know?
I hear you.
Because I mean, the kids that were in there before, when you were cleaning up after them and you were chasing them out, just what, a couple of, about three, four months ago, five months ago? I mean, they were a bunch of great kids. They were cleaning the place up. They were quiet. They were quiet. They were great kids. I mean, like I said, I've got nothing against skate park. I've got nothing against skateboards, okay? I've got nothing against it. I just want to make sure that, you know, hey, like it said here, you made the ordinance for the older people, you know? And I want to get my peace and quiet.
I got you.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ben. Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment on public ordinance number 2022-3338? Okay, seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Miniman Kratz.
Yes.
Miniman Setembro. Oh, sorry, excuse me. Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading with extension noted.
Okay.
Our next ordinance for tonight's agenda, we have 2022-3339, an ordinance providing funding for various capital purposes for the Township of Middletown appropriating $1,400,000 for such purpose.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 2022-3339? Sure, Don.
Evening, my name's Don Watson, living at 1 Collinson Drive. Since we introduced last meeting, I thought it was almost like a duplicate ordinance because they were both the same dollar figures.
Yeah.
Yeah. And nothing's a coincidence around here. So I looked a little further and actually read them. Questions in number two, what is a showmobile? Is that like a camper that you want?
We currently have two. You've probably seen them at Middletown Day or at the Mac. It's the, it's the big box truck, basically, that has the front that comes down so that you can utilize it as a stage when you don't have staging.
Oh, like it's parades and stuff?
Yeah, 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 exactly. So we have two of them, one's from, I don't know, the 70s, which is basically. Yeah, and the other one's being repaired from a big.
Hey, I'm from the 70s.
Oh, sorry.
I came here, I came here for the senior proclamation.
Yeah, yeah. But it's due time to replace that one.
This canopy structure at the arts center, is that like an awning?
Yes, so. Yeah, so.
Retract?
It's a good question. I had the same idea. Deputy Mayor Hybel and I met with the Arts Council, and they are, they have been expanding their programs. And part of that was that they have been renting a tent outside, so back in between the building and the pond. And we had been discussing with them how we can further expand the arts and expand their access. And one of them was if they could stop, if they could utilize that money better, if we just built them an awning and now that they would have that all the time. So they have that access to painting programs and vendor, you know, shows that they have. So it would just go on the backside of the building.
Okay, back where you have the tent, yeah.
They're renting it on a yearly basis at this point.
So it's gonna be like a.
Permanent structure.
Canvas material. No, it's gonna be like.
Yeah.
Okay.
Canvas structure, you're supposed to take down by a certain date set by the state for.
You take it down and put up new material?
Snow loads.
Wind, things like that, yeah.
Okay. Very good. A street sweeper? Is this an addition? How many street sweepers do we have right now?
We have one. Ted, correct?
We have two, actually. One is, one is not really.
We have one that works.
One that works.
Okay.
Spare parts. Okay, does this mean I'm gonna get a street sweeper down my street someday?
You're gonna be, it's gonna be going down your street first, Don.
Alphabetical order? I'm in Collinson. But you gotta get down Wilson to get to Collinson. And Tindall. I was just wondering about that. It takes like five years to get a street sweeper in my neighborhood.
Well, one thing that Ted and I have been discussing along with Tony and Rick is the absolute need for us not to just have one street sweeper, but to have two and to get them on the road and out there. Because not only does it, is it obviously something that benefits the residents, especially in their driveway aprons and things like that, but also getting those leaves out and preventing them from going into the storm drains. You know, that is a critical component to stormwater management and ensuring that our infrastructure remains solid.
I used to raise that issue here over the years, and I was told that that doesn't really matter. But I'm glad, I'm glad you're coming around. Road paving equipment.
Yes.
Can you detail out a little bit better?
What the, we haven't, we have come up with a, what we feel is a very solid program to ensure that we're gonna be able to provide our roads department with the, you know, hot boxes, bobcats with the milling attachments. We have a milling attachment now. But if we're able to do milling on one side of the town and then the next day, two days later, the next week, do it on the other side of town, we can send out the one crew who's gonna do the paving on that opposite side. So we're able to fill those potholes. And in our opinion, we're gonna be able to fill them better because instead of filling a three-by-three hole, we're going to be filling, doing bigger sections.
Making a bigger hole.
You're not making a bigger hole, you're making a better, a better patch than you would if you just filled in the hole itself. When you fill in the hole, it, water is still gonna find a way to seep in. When you do it and you take, instead of a three-by-three patch, you make it a seven-by-seven or a 10-by-10, you're ensuring that that patch you're not coming back to later. And that's what we're trying to do. We're working towards ensuring that the paving and the patching that we're doing on our roads is going to have a true impact on making our roads last longer.
So does that mean we're going to buy one of those metal plates to seal the hot patch that we're putting down?
No, 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 we're, part of this purchase would be bringing in a roller that we would be able to do the project from start to finish.
Okay, because I see the bucket's a hot tar.
Yeah, they've been going around. You know, I was, I was with them out on, they were on.
We never had the sealer, the metal plate to actually seal.
Yep.
The patches.
Yep.
We're still using the old tire thing.
So it's a, it's a big undertaking, obviously.
Indeed. And last point I wanted to ask about was the gym equipment for the administrator? Are you setting up a gym here?
So we, in the old Town Hall, in the old building. No, 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 in the, where the police evidence, you know, the building that was on the highway. There was gym equipment in there. This facility, this building does have a gym. Um, we, uh, are required to provide our police officers with, um, access to, uh, gym equipment. Um, fortunately, due to, uh, the, the size of this building and the, and the, our ability to now have mo- almost 95% of our employees in this building, um, we'll be able to provide not just our police, but our, um, our employees with access to a gym. And that just benefits, um, all of us, obviously, for the, and benefits the employees, but it also benefits the, the fact that we'll have, uh, work towards a, a healthier staff.
So everybody in this building is considered administration?
All employees, uh, wo- would have access to that gym. For, for access to the gym.
Okay, 'cause it says that the gym equipment's for the administration department.
No.
Yeah, who wrote this?
Uh, the bond council.
Yeah.
Just so you're aware, too, the, the gym requirement is a part of the police contract. So they're contractually obligated to provide them with a gym.
Right, I thought in the original police department, there was, um, gym in like a box.
In the police garage building.
Yeah, in the garage. Next to where the state police, well, where the state police used to be, where they used to be stationed, um, there was a gym right next to it.
As a taxpayer, does that mean I have gym membership to this thing?
No.
No? I just pay for it and you guys get to use it?
And it can't, it can't be used by
What's up with that?
It can't be used by anyone on their
That's not insured.
It has to be worked, done outside of work hours.
Has to be in, yeah, an employee of the town.
Okay. Just curious. Thank you very much.
No problem, Don. You and Tony can, you know, he- head over to, uh, workout, Jersey Strong or whatever it's being.
Jersey Strong ain't there no more.
I know, that's, that's gone too.
That's where I used to go. That's why I was wondering, since I'm paying taxes, I, I got a gym membership here.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
Unfortunately, I don't, I don't think the insurance fund is not, is not gonna let us do that.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Don. Any other member of the public wishing to speak on public ordinance number 3339? Seeing no other member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Committeeman Clark. Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel. Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on second and final reading. Our next item on tonight's agenda, we have introduction of ordinance 2022-3340, an ordinance amending chapter 130-15 of the Code of the Township of Middletown governing hours of sale for alcoholic beverages.
Motion to introduce.
Committeewoman Clark. Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel. Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held May 2nd, 2022. Our next item on tonight's agenda, we have budget, um, uh, action items. Our first item is Resolution 22-124, a resolution authorizing the 2022 budget amendment. At this time, I have to read the resolution into the record. Township of Middletown, Monmouth County, New Jersey, resolution to amend the budget. Whereas the local municipal buil- budget for the calendar year 2022 was introduced on 21st day of March 2022, and whereas the public hearing on said budget has been held as advertised. Whereas it is desired to amend said introduced budget. Now therefore be it resolved by the Township Committee of the Township of Middletown, County of Monmouth, that the following amendments to the introduced budget of calendar year 2022 to be made. We have the current fund anticipated revenues, general revenues. First item, surplus anticipated from $10,700,000 to $10,700, uh, $700,000. The miscellaneous revenue, section F, special items of general revenue anticipated with prior written, written consent of Director of the Local Government Services, public and private revenue offset with appropriations, American Rescue Plan Act, A R P A, from $225,000 to $245,000. The total miscellaneous revenue, $15,870,236.72. Item number four, receipts from delinquent taxes, 15,000, from $15,000 to $15,000. Number five, subtotal general revenues, $26,585,236.72. Two, $26,605,236.72. The amount, number six, amount to be raised by taxes. A, local tax for municipal purpose, including reserve for uncollected taxes, $57,975,374.29.
You done, huh?
No, I'm not done.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, C, minimum library taxes, $4,149,043. Two, $4,149,043. Total amount to be raised by taxes for support Middletown, uh, support of Middlet- uh, the municipal budget, Two, $62,124, uh, $124,417.29. Total reven- total general revenues, $88,709,654.1. Two, $88,729,000, uh, $729,654.1. The current fund appropriations, number eight, general appropriations. A, operations with cap, within caps. Police salary and wages, $13,881,356. Two, $13,781,356. Police salary and wages with ARPA funds, $1,835,000 to $1,935,000. Utilities and bulk purchases, street lighting, $700,000 to $690,000. Unclassified sick time buyback, $225,000 to $205,000. Accumulated leave compensation, $100,000 to $90,000. Total appropriations, item eight A, within caps, $61,446,830. Two, $61,406,830. Total operations, including contingent with cap, within caps, $61,466,830. To $61,426,830. The detail, salaries and wages, $29,765,931. Two, $29,735,931. Other expenses, $31,700,899. Thirty, two, $31,690,899. E, deferred charges and statutory expenditures within caps. Number one, deferred charges within caps, prior year bill tele systems, two forty, zero, two forty thousand dollars. Total deferred charges and statutory expenditures within caps, $7,497,193. Two, $7,537,193. H dash one, total general appropriations within caps, $68,964,23. Two, eight, uh, $68,964,23. Almost done. Number eight, general appropriations, A, operations excluded from caps. Public and private programs offset by revenues, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, $22,000, uh, twenty, $225,000 to $245,000. General appro- number eight, general appropriations, operations excluded from caps, $6,249,631.1. Two, $6,269,631.1. Details, salary and wages, $4,508,000, uh, $508,843. Two, $4,508,843. Other expenses, $1,740,788.1. H dash two, total general appropriations excluded from caps, Two, $18,190,631.1. L, subtotal general appropriations, item H dash one and zero, and oh, eight, $87,134,654.1. Two, $87,154,654.1. Reserve for uncollected taxes, $1,575,000. Two, $1,575,000. Total general appropriations, $88,709,654.1. Two, $88,729,654.1. Be it further resolved that two certified copies of this resolution be filed to the officer, the office of the Director of Division of Local Government Services for certification to the calendar year 2022, local municipal budget so amended. Mayor?
Way to go, Heidi.
Oh, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Committeeman, uh, Clark. Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel. Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt, adopt Resolution 22-124. At this time, we have Resolution 125, uh, resolution adopting the 2022 municipal operating budget, which requires public hearing.
Any member of the public wishing to speak on the 2022 municipal operating budget, which is Resolution 22-125? Don? No? Okay. Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and approve.
Second.
Committeeman Clark. Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel. Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt Resolution 22-125. At this time, I'd like to ask the Township Committee to adopt a consent agenda, which would include Resolutions 22-126 through uh, twenty, uh, excuse me, 22-133, removing 22-134 and including 22-135 and bingo and raffle applications.
Motion to, uh, approve consent agenda.
Second.
Committeeman Clark. Committeewoman Kratz. Deputy Mayor Hybel. Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt a consent agenda. At this time, we have Township Committee comments.
Alright, Committeewoman Kratz. And, and I wish you continued good health. I'm a proud organ donor for many, many years and I, and I know how important that is. So thank you very much. Um, also wanted to extend a big congratulations to our fifth grade students from Ocean and Harmony and New Monmouth. This week, we had 65 students graduate from our Project Press Plus program, which is a peer leadership program and a drug and alcohol prevention program. So we're really quite proud of them. They attended for seven solid weeks and, um, they were excited. We had, we always end with a pizza party and certificates and their principals come and it's really, it's really a great evening. So we've moved on to our students who are attending Thompson in the fall. So good stuff. We have 110 students in this session. So we're looking forward to graduating for them too. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Committeewoman Kratz, Committeeman Clark.
Like to echo Committeewoman Kratz's, uh, comments about being a donor, I am myself, since I turned, uh, old enough to make that decision. Um, congratulations and I wish you the best and, um, I had the opportunity to be part of the Linkcroft Little League Parade last weekend or two weekends ago. And it was, uh, having played that league as a, as a child and having the opportunity to march in it as a representative of this board, uh, of this committee was, uh, pretty cool. Well, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Sure, comments, uh, Ron, um, Dane Dancy, uh, uh, amazing, uh, like story that we got all, all tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Forgot the green light. But, uh, just a wonderful story, really, and, um, Laura almost had me over there, so, um, it's a great, great, great job and everyone's out there to support everyone there, so, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Uh, I'll hold my comments. I've, I've said, uh, 20. I just wanted to note it. I think it's the first time I've ever held my comments, but, alright, any member of the public, uh, with that being said, any member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Um, I ask that you come up to the mic, state your name and address for the record. We ask that you keep your comments to five minutes, at four minutes, I'll let you know that you have one minute remaining. Um, and with that being said, any member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Yes, ma'am, come on down. Um, it's just for the purp- I got it. I'll, I'll identify everybody. Am I, are we identifying your comments with everybody that's back there? Okay, so is everybody okay with her speaking on your behalf? Alright, come, okay. Oh, okay.
Good evening.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm good.
Just state your name and address for the record.
Anne Marie Pertill, 21 Pearl Street.
Okay.
Uh, we have ongoing situation in our neighborhood with, uh, we've had several dog attacks and collectively, we have made numerous phone calls to, um, the administrative offices, to the animal control. And this situation is still not been resolved. Uh, two of the injured parties, one of which is here, resulted in hospitalizations. And, uh, we just don't know at this point who to express our concerns to.
Okay, um, be- before we go any further, uh, is it, I just wanna, is it okay to discuss this in open? Who, what's your address again, ma'am?
It's 21 Pearl, right off of Harmony Road.
Okay. Is, is there any, is there any pending litigation or anything like that?
No.
Okay. No?
No.
Okay. Alright, are you okay with that?
We have someone here that was injured.
Okay, uh, folks. Tom, do you wanna, do you wanna just elaborate with what you know?
We've had a lot of discussions about this. The issue is a
Well, hang on, folks.
The issue is, uh, an aggressive dog in the neighborhood, um, that was recently taken away for a while, uh, but recently then returned.
Fol- folks, just for the purposes of, of documentation as to who's speaking, I'm just gonna ask that, that we, we just speak one at a time and then, and Tony.
And what, what I'm gonna suggest is that, is that we schedule a day for your group to come in so we can meet with the police department and we can explain to you. There's a lot of complexity to the rules about how you can enforce rules against, um, dangerous dogs. That this, this dog, even though I know it's injured, uh, a couple of people, I know one person in particular. Right now, the police don't feel it meets the threshold where it can be taken away from the owner.
Who sets those thresholds, Tom?
Well, this, the law, there, there is, there
But is it state law, is it?
State law, there's some very specific criteria that you have to achieve and
So can, can I, can I make a suggestion really quick and, and all of you can feel free to, to come up and, and, and say whatever and, and obviously as well, but we're, we're gonna get whoever wants to take the lead on, in helping schedule this. We're gonna get Laura, Laura's gonna get all of your contact information and we'll pass around a piece of paper, just, if you can give us your email addresses and your names and your phone numbers, that way, um, per Tony's recommendation, we'll have a meeting with our police chief, whoever is dealing with this case specifically right now, um, yourselves and Tony. And, and, and Rich, Rich and Rich DiBenedetto in our animal control. So Laura will, will pass that around. But if there's any comments that you wanna make a- aside from that, you, you're more than welcome to.
I'm gonna allow somebody else to
Okay, alright. I, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. What's your name and address?
Sandra Murphy, 31 Pearl Street. My mother was the one that was attacked, um, on April of 2019, alright? Fifteen stitches over her eye, broken elbow, scratched on the back, uh, scratched on the chin. Um, two bites on the arm. Uh, surgery on the elbow to repair it. chin, um, two bites on the arm, uh, surgery on the elbow to repair it, fourteen days in the hospital, cracked sternum, cracked bruise. That doesn't warrant anything. She can't sue, she can't do anything, because the person has no insurance. So, it's not like she's getting anything from it. Nothing can happen for it, but after that, and the guy at animal control knows, we call, we call the police, we call, they're there all the time. They know Jennifer Moore. Something has to be done with the dog. The dog is loose all the time. The dog was just loose and just attacked somebody else. So, we're begging something to be done, and I know, yes, we can all get together, but that to happen to my mother of a dog running out of a house, across the street, and going and attacking her, come on. Nothing can be done. That's what she was told. The judge said, well, she's an older lady, she fell, because we were asked to come-
I'm sorry, say that again?
The judge said, well, she's an older lady, and she fell. That's why she got hurt so bad.
What judge was that?
I would, whoever animal control brought from two thousand, uh, we were there four times, we were asked to come. We were never asked to go up and talk to anybody, the Middletown judge.
Okay.
Um, we were never asked to go up and speak. We show up, she shows up as high as a kite, um, and comes in-
What year did this occur?
This was two thousand nineteen.
Okay.
April nineteenth of two thousand nineteen. Um, we've been ongoing with everybody. Everybody knows us, we call, they come, which is great. The dog ends up running back up into the house after it's been loose for forty-five minutes to an hour. All we need is for a little kid to get hurt. It has gone up to little kids in strollers, but hasn't done anything.
Okay.
Um, so this is where we're coming from. I mean, I feel bad for my mother, having to deal with this, fourteen days in the hospital, and two months of not being able to lay down.
Yeah.
So, that's where we're coming from.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm Kathy Barber, I'm three ninety-eight Harmony Road, I'm on the corner of Harmony and Pearl.
Sure.
So, I'm at the top of the street, she's at the bottom of the street, the dog lives two houses from me.
Okay.
So, on March first, I've known about this, I knew about her moms, I changed the way I walked for two years, the dog has been out and about, coming along my fence, peeing on my dog, in my yard, as much as on my front porch, um, you know, whatever, nobody really seems to care much about it. I came out this day, my dog chose to go left, I looked, I saw the dog's tail, I tried to not run, walk quickly with my twenty-five pound miniature schnauzer. As I'm walking across the street, I see him coming, he attacks me from behind, I got several bites in my arm, my coat was all bit up, I had my dog above my head, he bit my dog. Animal control said, not bad enough, because when I said to animal control, does somebody have to, like, what is this? Does somebody have to die?
Well, I, I-
There's a threshold.
Yeah.
So, either my dog would have had to lose a limb, or, I mean, I had him here, my bite was here, I'm a hairdresser, I couldn't even do work for like, quite a while, and again, I already know from her, nothing's going to happen. I got a lawyer, Frank Wilton, right across the street.
Yeah.
He said, I'll try to go for homeowners. All I really want, I have shitty insurance, all I really want is my hospital paid. I'm not trying to sue her or anything. Animal control first assured me, the dog would go into quarantine for ten days, so I didn't get the rabies shots. I called after the ten days, and they said, we didn't think she was going to get him back, she almost surrendered the dog, but then she heard that the dog was going to be euthanized, because he's not adoptable now. We have two severe bites, let alone all the roaming that he does in the neighborhood, stops traffic on Harmony Road, and basically, like she said, nothing we can do.
Yeah.
So, I leave horrified now. I get in my car and drive places to walk my little schnauzer around the neighborhood. We're a big walking neighborhood, we all have dogs, it's impacting our life horribly. Not an apology, ever, not anything up to any of us.
From the homeowner, from the, from the owner.
Nothing, just nothing.
Uh, o- okay, so, it's, it's okay.
So, it's, it's really-
So, so-
I'm petrified to go walk my dog now, which is one of my true joys in life, is to go walk my little dog. And now I have to like, this is how I leave, literally leave my house. I'm like this, I look down, this animal control said, if you see as much as a paw out, call us. Excuse me, call you? So, and, and I agree with her, I live right there, two houses from her, several times I go home from shop, right, animal control's there, police are there, it's been ongoing for at least five years. I didn't want anything bad to happen to the dog, but he's unadoptable now, and we shouldn't be terrorized, the whole street is terrorized because of this dog. And the homeowner just doesn't deserve a dog, this big, or this, he's like a hundred, and I don't even know how many pounds he is, he's a really big scary dog. He's a Chinese Shar Pei, he's probably about a hundred and twenty pounds.
Okay, folks, I, I, I need, I need everybody to just, when they come up to the microphone, that's when you can provide input. Until that point, please, please, just, thank you. How are you?
Thank you, how are you all?
Good. Just before you give us your name, and, and, I, I have to say, I'm not familiar with the, the threshold, um, so, one thing that I am going to do, I've, I just sent a, a text, I am going to, I'm asking for what the state, what state law prescribes it to be a dangerous animal, uh, because I, I have to be honest with you, this is the first time I've ever had to, you know, hea- heard of this, obviously, um, so, uh, I'm not, I'm not, not responding on purpose, I'm just not familiar with those state statutes. So, go ahead, your name and address?
Tricia Drobisch, nineteen Pearl Street.
Okay.
I'm actually right next door to the dog that we're referring to. Uh, the dog is aggressive, I could just ditto everything that's been said already, we are all nervous. We happen to have, uh, two dogs, about eighty-three pounds and sixty-four pounds. It's impossible for me to lift those dogs over my head, so if I'm walking them, and I'm faced with the aggressive dog, I, it's, it's, we're probably going to meet whatever the threshold is, because I'm afraid something terrible would happen. There would be no way for me to scoop my dogs and get to safety. Um, the dog is aggressive, it charges the fence, it's digging under the fence, I now have along the fence, cinder blocks, I'm doing everything I can to keep the dog out of my yard, instead of having the dog dig and then come into my yard, so, um, we, we have just all of the concerns that you heard, plus these concerns that I'm mentioning to you. It's a terrible situation, we're all scared to death walking in the neighborhood, and we shouldn't be.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any, any other member of the public from, from this group that wants, that's speaking about this topic, want to, want to? Yes, sir.
Galanza, twenty-three Pearl Street, I am one house over from Trish, um, who just spoke.
Okay.
And I have two girls, and we have two dogs, too, and they're scared to walk the dogs, they're on the block, we keep our dogs in our, in the backyard. You know, one time, uh, two years ago, the dog was out, and he charged, and he came right up to the door, actually banged onto the door, I just got my twelve-year-old, uh, chocolate lad in the house before, he would have mangled her, because she can't run like she used to. It's a, it's a scary situation, uh, my girls won't go out with the dogs, they can walk on the block, because they're scared he might be out, and he's going to run after them. So, it's, everything ditto what they've said, we're just all very concerned, we don't know what the threshold is, but something, for something really bad happens-
Yeah.
It needs to be addressed here.
Yeah, the, like I said, there's no doubt, I'm, I'm asking for these statutes right now, so that I can take a look at it, so I can under, understand it better, uh, because, uh, like I said, I, I haven't come in contact with, you know, come in, a situation like this arise, uh, to, to this level, uh, obviously, so, I'm just trying to educate myself on that, um, quickly, as, as quickly as I can, because obviously, this is very emotional, you know, and, and horrible. Um, so, uh, we're going to come, we're going to, Laura, it looks like, has gotten all of your information, um, we're going to ensure that that meeting gets scheduled very quickly. I'm going to, I, I just texted the chief and asked for a briefing on, on what he knows about this situation already, and whoever is investigating it. So, I, I'll get that information, so that, you know, we're, we're all prepared. I'm sure they will, I'm sure. The, it, you know, it happens, when you, when you, when you mention a street, and the, they, they know who, who you're talking about very quickly.
They're going to know.
Yeah.
Pearl Street, very well.
Okay. Yeah. Hold, hold, come, come, come back up, come, all right, oh, just, just hold on, state your name and address again for the record.
All right, Kathy Barber, three ninety-eight Harmony Road, Middletown.
Okay.
So, like I said, when I, the, when I came to get the police report, they came out, oh, you're the one that got bit by the dog. So, yeah, everybody knows, but it's, it's, I don't know, something definitely has to be done, it's totally, totally terrifying. I didn't even walk him for a couple of weeks, because I was terrified, it's very crazy, and he's been on my property, he's been along my fence, he's been on my porch, and we would greatly appreciate it if you could get something quickly that we could all get together and figure out-
I'll, I'll-
-what the law is, or what can be done.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to look into it. Just state your name and address again.
Anne Marie Pertil, twenty-one Pearl Street. I just wanted to add that the, um, the person who owns the dog is not the homeowner, it's the homeowner's daughter, which, uh, we were wondering, I was wondering particularly, at what point is the owner of the home responsible for who he rents to, or who he has living there? And the other thing that concerns me greatly is the fact that in our neighborhood, there are a lot of young families that just moved in, and a lot of them, I have two dogs, a lot of them walk their babies in carriages, you know, with their small dogs trailing behind. So, my concern is, it's just going to be a matter of time before there's a really serious situation. So, we're at wits' end here, all of us. We walk, I walk with pepper spray, walk with golf clubs, Cassandra's mom walks with a big stick, we don't even walk past that house, but, I mean, obviously, two people here live right next door, so, you know, sometimes you just can't avoid-
You can't be a prisoner in your own home.
We are, we are, we are terrified.
I, 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 I totally get it, I totally get it.
And we're all dog lovers, so it's, we don't blame the dog.
Yeah.
You know.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all very much. Uh, any, you want to make a statement, sir?
No, I think I interrupt you with that.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. All right, any other member of the public wishing to make a public statement? All right, folks, we're going to get that scheduled up for you, we'll be in touch, you'll hear from Laura, um, and app, and apparently, the HVAC has to turn on. All right.[1772.23]